Likely sick tonight, not gonna be able to make it. Instead if he wasn't here, he was just sick. We'll go ahead and start with the approval of the agenda additions, deletions, and corrections. I've got three additions. We're gonna add on the consent agenda A two Q, which is in front of you. Anything like?
Hello?
The temporary on sale liquor license for the American Legion's. That application is on the desk in front of you. We'll add that consent agenda A two Q. Like to add under B two. Don Marty sidewalk question. We have some materials here which we'll discuss. Where's that? Q two. And then add under the actioning report J two Sixteenth Street Northeast paving discussion. Some MINDOT funds. Brandon's gone up before us on that. Those are the three additions. Dan, do you have anything?
I have nothing to add. I would just, I type all of them and I can send them all over.
One thing I'd like to pull out of the consent agenda is L. And move that to new business.
Ship prep or bike repair?
Yep. It'd be under two, right?
Yep.
And from what I understand, is there a different water tower resolution? I would like to take that out and move it to next meeting under new business since I haven't had a chance to take a look at it.
So we knew that topic from the side.
Yep.
So scratch F one.
That's it for me.
That's it?
Thank you.
Doug, anything?
No.
Okay. So entertain a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Corey. On the second. Thanks Doug, on the basis of I?
Aye.
Pull the same side. Onto the consent agenda. All the information in the packet, we've got the minutes, committee meetings are in there caught up. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'd just like to make sure this is a legal document, the misprint on all of it.
On the E F T and H, yeah.
The MINDOT instead of the MINDOT on all of it.
Oh, it says MINDOT on the paperwork, but on there it says MICKDOT.
The resolutions have MINDOT.
Yeah.
I apologize.
MICKDOT.
I apologize. That's me, that's all me.
That's been easy, you know.
Yep.
That was the only thing I had to.
Yeah.
Okay. Entertained a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Corey. On the basis of I?
Aye.
Pull the same side. Onto visitors to the council.
We have a couple with.
Good evening. It's good to be back. I can be pretty quick tonight. I know, or at least I believe this, you've seen this in the packet. This is essentially the same, the tables, everything are the same as I presented on the last time I was here, a month ago. So what we're here asking for tonight is approval of the resolution. Just a reminder of our process, the way we're working this is we have to get the resolutions from all of the members. Once we have the resolutions, we expect that by the end of the month. We'll go and sign the, what we call the upstream agreement, the agreement with the counterparty that's selling power to us, to Compass. And then the resolution authorizes you guys then to sign the downstream agreement or the agreement that was also included in your packet. Obviously, there's a few details missing in here that we can't fill out until we have the upstream agreement signed. So all we're here, all I'm here tonight to do is ask for approval of the resolution, authorizing you to sign the downstream agreement once we have all the paperwork in place. Again, we've been through presenting to councils and commissions for the last month, more, month and a half. And we're trying to get all this wrapped up by the end of October so we can sign the upstream agreements by, in early November. So I guess I don't need to go through the presentation unless you want me to, or if you have any questions. But, but we're here to ask for the resolution so we can, we can get these things executed. The only other piece, other piece of information, I did say, I believe the last time I was here, the price was around forty bucks. We got refreshed prices last week and they're below forty. So that's good news. I don't expect the prices to be volatile or be moving, but we still wanna get, get it done. So. Any, any questions?
Any questions over Chris? That's a great thing, thank you. Helps us with our prices going forward.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you. Okay, so entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of a wholesale power agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
All the favors said I?
Aye.
Pull the same side. Resolution passes. Is that the only action needed on that item?
So one.
Thank you. Thanks again for coming, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public forum.
Do you have to do number?
Two, so we had.
Number three.
Oh, that's right.
B two. And we like have officially completely miscommunicated. Because he came to our planning commission meeting. Wednesday night. Wednesday night. It was time we said, you really wanna be there Wednesday night? And now he's not here. And the information is in front of you. So he's looking at a corner lot on the corner of Fifth Street Northwest and Thirteenth Avenue Northwest. And he is requesting that when this lot is built out, that there only be a requirement for sidewalks on the Thirteenth Avenue Northwest side of that corner lot. It would have a large cutout at the corner as it does on the opposite corner. But then not have a sidewalk that extends along Fifth Street Northwest since that will abut with the development that was built out at a time when sidewalks were not required by the city.
His biggest question was, he wanted help from the city in putting in the ped ramp on the corner.
Oh.
If, if the, when the sidewalk goes in, that ped ramp that's down there, he was asking if the city would consider paying for part of it. Which was part of his coming tonight. I, I, he was here Tuesday morning too, and he knew about coming tonight, so I'm, I'm not really sure where he is.
Okay.
Well, I.
Till we hear from Doug.
I'll say something. I bought a corner lot two blocks in there and I had to put my own stuff in.
Yeah, I, I.
I, I agree with the sidewalk part where no sidewalk on the north side there because the street has no sidewalk on either side.
Right. With that end of no.
On the avenue, yeah.
It'd only go one house, it'd be ten out.
Right.
But I think any, anytime the sidewalk has to be put in, that's the, the. Whoever buys the lot, whoever buys the lot, they're responsible.
So should we wait for Mr. Marty to come back to the next meeting and formally request it?
Yeah.
Let me ask.
My first question, why, he was there Monday night, why wasn't this addressed at planning commission? This is actually a planning commission.
Right.
Well, neither he, neither he or I or Linda actually recall that that was the reason that he was there. We thought, he and we thought he was there about Eighth Avenue. Yes.
And then he came in Tuesday morning and talked to me about it. And I told him he could come and talk to the council about it because you guys would have to approve or disprove the helping him put the ped ramp in. Which is his major question is, he wanted help financing the ped ramp. And I told him to come tonight, so I'm not really sure where, where he is.
Well, let's get back to him, have him go through planning and zoning and get that back on the next planning and zoning.
Okay.
That way.
Sure.
The right way. That makes sense here, may as well come back through. Need to hear it from the person who's asking. Okay, onto public forum, I have two cards. First, Linda.
I understand that the water tower discussion was moved to the next week?
Yep, it was moved to the next meeting. Do you wanna wait till the next meeting then?
Well, I think I would. Mine, my reading is quite lengthy and I might send it to the council out of time. That'd be alright.
That's fine. Yep, and then I guess my, Gary?
I guess I'll speak because I'm not gonna be here. Oh, I know you all missed. Cherry Geese, eight oh six West Hill Court, Casson, Minnesota. I guess I was wondering about this agreement with the old water tower and the city and Historic Society, Dodge County Historic Society. Why are you wanting to end the agreement?
Well, this isn't a question and answer period. If you have some input for us, that's great.
Okay, well, that's my one. Well, then I would just like to say that, you know, you have people that want to, citizens that are active, proactive, working with you. I just don't understand why you would wanna end something like that. Their only regard is to keep it as a historic site. And in order to do that, it has to match, meet certain criteria, and I think you all know what that is. So I'm, I guess I'm here as president of care, Casson Alliance for Restoration, supporting, you know, the continuation of this agreement. And we've seen, the history shows that city didn't take very good care of it a few years ago. You had thistles and weeds and it looked like a dump. And, you know, I, I think you got good people on Historic Society and many of them live in Casson. And certainly the icon of Casson, that water tower. So that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, on to D, no public hearings, no clear reports, full of business, number two, reinspection fee. I have the two.
It was my understanding that Doug had asked about that you put on the agenda?
Yep.
Yeah, I was, I was called on the reinspection fee and I had a little bit of a chat with you.
Yep.
And I guess the biggest thing with it, were we gonna, at the same meeting, talk about our revised amounts on the permits?
As you and I talked, yes, I would like to bring that back.
I thought it was gonna be at, at the same time.
Yes, not at this meeting, it'll be later.
I guess the biggest conflict with this reinspection is that developer or builder or whoever's requiring it needs to bring a check to City Hall before they can be reinspected?
Yep, yep. They need to pay for the reinspection before it happens. Now, they actually know the same day that they don't, they know they didn't have inspection when the inspector leaves their property. So they could come here the same day that they learn that a reinspection is required and pay that fee. They don't have to wait until the day that they schedule the reinspection to pay the reinspection fee. So let's say they call on a Wednesday for an inspection, the inspector goes out, the property's not ready for inspection. The inspector informs the foreman or whoever's on the site that a reinspection will be required. They can come down here Wednesday immediately when the inspector leaves and pay the sixty dollars. They don't have to wait until the following, they don't have to wait till Friday, for example, to bring the sixty dollar inspection fee when they know they're ready for the reinspection. They could pay it right away.
I guess the whole thing is, not everyone is just here in town for, for that reinspection fee. Could there be something in the, when you buy your building permit, a number be given or whatever so that you could exchange that, so that fee could be taken out, that there isn't a trip involved, that someone had to get right here that day? I guess the bigger scenario is, it's Friday, I've got a final inspection on this house. And a railing isn't long enough or something, a little like that. I mean, it's pretty common that you can get that re inspected so your closings can still go on. But if it'd be on Friday afternoon here in the summer, it'd be pretty tough to do. You know what I mean? And the closing of that one house isn't the big thing. How many today, how many, that might entail three or four closings. So I mean, for, for a contractor, a building, a builder to have to come, come here with a check or I don't know how, there's gotta be, we wire everything else nowadays, you know, there's gotta be a way to, to get that fee to you or whatever.
Well, they can probably call in with a credit card.
Well, we have, we really can't take any of those payments by credit card, but we do have Dropbox. We do have a police department and there are several ways to provide the sixty dollar check.
Well, is, is that given to the builders? I mean, is everyone aware of that? Oh, you can drop it off at the police department? You know, I'm just.
If they, if they had an emergency, but, you know, the, the other part is, it is the builder's responsibility. I mean, why call for a final inspection if you know that you're not ready for one?
You never.
I'm not saying.
It's really their responsibility to call for a final inspection at the time that they're prepared for it.
Well, there's, inspections are called interpretations. Depending upon which inspector shows up, your interpretation might not be the same as theirs on how you read the code. I mean, if it's like Doug's saying, I mean, it's no different than having a, if you got a, ours are twenty five dollars for ours on electros. And we get a bill in the mail for it. I mean, there's no difference then, if they need a reinspection fee, send the bill out. And we've got fire calls here on the consent agenda for, what, four thousand dollars? That going on somebody's taxes, put it on their taxes. I mean, send the bill out for it. Pretty simple.
Well, we wouldn't even necessarily know that it happened if it happened the same afternoon.
Right, but we could still bill for it though.
If, if we can find, if, if we're aware that it even happened.
Well, if the inspector wants to pay for his next trip, he might wanna turn it in and say he meant.
Well, he would turn it in, but we wouldn't necess, I mean, we, I could share with you what our billing looks like from the inspector.
Maybe.
He needs to be more clear.
You know, so, so that was part of the idea of collecting the fee before, because we, unless what Doug is suggesting is that we just charge them upfront for two reinspection fees.
Per permit?
Per permit, and then not worry about it if.
Refund it if they don't have a reinspection.
No.
Doug, you paid for nightmare first.
You'd have to just charge them upfront, but that's gonna, for the, for the people that are doing it and know they're doing it to the code.
Yeah.
It'd seem fair if you only got a few that are not doing it.
Yeah. So it really has worked. Has there been anybody who has not had a reinspection because they didn't get a check?
No.
No. So we haven't had any difficulty with doing it that way.
I just had a call from someone that was pretty happy that it was. It didn't sound like it was in the, made it easy for his day to get up here to get a check there, so.
But he probably shouldn't have been upset with his foreman and not upset with City Hall. But the property required a reinspection. So we haven't had any difficulty with that policy at this point.
Okay. Let's, when we look at our fee schedule for 2018, we can address that when we get to the next building season.
Yeah, I mean, it should be fair, it's the same for every builder, I, I understand that. But there's gotta be a way to, so that someone doesn't have to, the trim rock just to make a trip out here that day to get a reinspection. You know, this day where you send everything else over your phone.
Okay, we can address that. G, new business, number one. Reclaiming Two Hundred and Fiftyth Avenue.
Yeah, so, so Two Hundred and Fiftyth Avenue is also our Eighth Avenue Southeast. And the portion that's covered in the reclaim is the portion that would be south of the current industrial lot that has a driveway off of Eighth Avenue Southeast to the point where the city had annexed Eighth Avenue into the city limit. So Don Marty approached me about taking the road back, but then approached the township about having the township take the road back. The township is okay with taking it back, but it would be a matter of returning it to gravel first. They wouldn't wanna take it back in its current condition. So this quote would be for returning that section of road to gravel, which essentially, if the city were to do something with a section of road that belongs to them, that would be an option for us. Even if we were going to retain the road to return it to gravel at this point. But we also have the option to return it to the township after we may provide some maintenance for it. And I have no idea what the maintenance history is, but it's not in good shape right now.
We have the option of leaving it as is too, right?
Right. And it would remain in the city limit. Right. Yep.
So what's the benefit to the city if it's not?
We don't have to fix it, maintain it anymore. That's all the benefit.
When's the last time that happened?
I was gonna say.
Well, that's, that's part of why I think he wants it back, is it's.
Cause it's not getting any.
Yeah, cause of where it's located.
I think forty five hundred bucks is the cheapest we can get out of that, yes. So reclaim it and wait it and, you know, roll it till we get it, so, yeah. I mean, I'm just glad we didn't stick any money in it until last year.
What's, what's your take on it, Brandon?
Well, I think you guys are spot on. Obviously, it's, roads need to be improved, but it's also a glorified driveway for three properties. And just the roadway, my understanding, just the roadway itself is in the city limit. So if we went back to the township and let's say some properties were developed from the Venture Metals, I think the property self property that we built from, from there to, to the driveways, if there's any development adjacent to, to the roadway, we would, we would then in turn build that roadway to a proper city street at that time and then re-annex it in the property. So by de-annexing it, I don't see any issues with that, so. And in addition to maintaining the physical pavement, I believe it'd also be plowing it too, that the city would not continue plowing to the south, which I, my understanding is pretty difficult to plow and turn around and whatnot, so.
Okay.
Is there two different motions on that, or is it all in one?
Well, that, so that's the first thing is.
The reclaiming.
Is the reclaiming.
Entertained a motion on the.
Reclaim part?
Yep.
I'll make that motion?
To approve the little bit.
Yep.
Motion to approve the little bit for the reclaiming project. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Stand, under inspection, all the favors said I?
Aye.
Pull the same side. Passes on to the vacation portion.
Right, which, they're not both vacations, so Marty actually is the annexation. And I would lean on attorney left to guide us through that process. Whether that would be via a resolution under the quarterly annexation agreement? Or will that require a hearing since it's basically the opposite of an orderly annexation?
I do not know the answer to that right off the top of my head.
I just have one other question on that though. Being the first part of that road was never upgraded when they let them put houses back there before anymore was annexed in there. Wouldn't we have some kind of an improvement to that road? Sure that the property, you know, lots are gonna go in there at some point. Were your guys' questions?
What was the question?
I'm still on the north side of the road, I guess you probably. There's lots off of that to the east already.
Oh, the subdivision that goes off east.
That subdivision. And nothing was done to that first part of the road as an upgrade. Or that, I'm just thinking if any more lots are ever put in there, something's gonna have to be done because it's gonna be a rock road at that time.
Sure.
Well, not the subdivision, it's, the only part going back is at the field, right? Right where it starts at the field?
Correct. It'd be, it's called Venture Metals is the industry that's on the southwest corner of the intersection there, the first intersection. So we're reclaiming from their south property line to the south, to the, to the two driveways. So if there's any development on the residual Marty property, I believe he owns everything from Ventures Metals to his, his house, I think his son's house. If there's any development there, then we would be looking at improving the road at that time.
That's the, that's the question I ask. Because the, the part that's staying there now never was really upgraded to anything when the other lots went in. I'm just looking for a, something saying that it should be at that time.
So from the south end of Ventures Metal to the north to the county road, Thirty Four West Special Memorial, there, there is some road improvement needs there that we'll have to look at long term. If we continue to develop to the east or to the south, we'll have to look at that in the future. But that's in the city limits, everything to the south is not in the city limit. So if we were to annex up in the south, then we could look at a future, we talked about transportation improvement districts, different means to recover some of the costs and improve adjacent roads to development.
There must have been something done there, Doug, because as soon as you hit right where the city limit stop, I mean, the road falls apart.
Yeah, there was a little stuff, and you just chipped it.
Correct, yep.
I think it, it looked a little worse, you know, it looks a little better than what it actually is because they did a little patching and then chipped it. Yeah, something had to be done over the years.
It looks like a joint resolution similar to what you do for the annexation. Okay. And do the de-annexation.
Okay, so we could come back with a resolution to your next meeting and then present it to Manorville Township at their next meeting for the de-annexation. Then the vacation discussion starts where the new Seventh Street Southeast went into less subdivision. And I'm really the thinking when that street was put in is that the city would not have any reason then to maintain the section of Eighth Avenue from there to where it falls off towards Fourteen. But the new funeral home is actually, their design shows them utilizing that area to access their garage and their portico, either as they're leaving or coming or going, it looks like. So we did have that discussion when they came to planning commission that the city maybe look at vacating that roadway. And then they could put in a drive on the half of the roadway that would be transferred to them at the time of vacation. That would allow them access to their garage and their portico. And then the other half of the road would go to Clary. I think the only maybe concern is that there'd be an easement for the Hertz property because they currently have an easement along the north side of the left subdivision. So they would still need to be able to get to where the city vacated Eight to where their easement is on the north side of the subdivision.
Okay, so at that Seventh Avenue.
On Clement Street.
Seventh Street. That is far enough north that it takes care of the other driveway that goes in there for?
The, well, the Seventh Street Court isn't actually on city property. It's not, it's on private property, so it's named Seventh Street Court, but it isn't actually a city maintained.
Does it line up with the Seventh Street that went in?
Pretty close, I, no?
Do we have, is there an app on this? I mean, we're, I mean, we're.
So I could maybe tell you a little bit.
See, if it's further north, that's what I'm saying, we've still gotta keep that road open to.
So the Seventh Street Court that you guys are discussing is basically the entrance to Stevens Williams Collision and the builder's, Clary's. So basically, from that point to the north is my understanding.
Okay.
But there's really no public use for that road, it's the old township road that went across, Highway Four. that went across Highway fourteen that was cut off when fourteen came through. So the discussion was, do we remove that roadway? Because again, it doesn't go anywhere. It's ultimately a couple hundred feet of a dead end road. When the Funeral Home proposed their site improvement on the east side of that road, they were wanting to use that road for essentially their driveway. The discussion is, since it doesn't serve the public, it's only serving one business, there's now the time to vacate that because we're not interested in maintaining that road for them, because again, there's no public interest.
The only question I have for our new Seventh Street is, if our plow's going to come up there and plow that road, is he far enough to the north that he plows in front of that other driveway, that other court or whatever?
Yeah, so the public right of way would have to probably go to that point, because then you have multiple properties.
That's what I'm saying. We don't want to cut it off at that, at that street when you still have taxpayers down the street a little bit. I was thinking that's at just a little bit north.
A little bit off.
So I think to bring this forward, since it is a vacation, I think there needs to be a public hearing involved, which in turn will have a document together that would show it in more detail to make sure we have the nubs in the votes laid out. And that's when the easement discussion comes in with the power lines that still runs through that public right of way. If we vacate public right of way, likely the utilities will request an easement so they can maintain their public facilities within the former public right of way.
And I think to give proper notice, that actually wouldn't happen until your first meeting in November, so we could give proper notice and hold the hearing for the vacation. So we're probably two meetings away from that.
So Clary's is on board to take on half of it? Is that what I'm saying? I'm hearing that the half will go to Funeral Home and the half will go to Clary's?
Yes, typically when you vacate a public right of way, one half goes to the east property owner, the other half goes to the other property owner.
Okay, then what's that do for, I mean, Funeral Home's planning on putting in access to that, what does that do to... Are they only able to use their half? You know, because...
It'd be basically their property, so the right of way would go away and the two properties lines would come together.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about a squabble coming in because they're wanting more of Clary's side finished for their driveway or anything, right? It's cut and dry.
They'd have to put on their side of the property.
Yeah, I don't know if there's been any discussion with Clary's.
Unless they get an easement or some permission from the other side.
Not sure, or remove all the pavement there on the new property that'd be Clary's. I'm not sure if there's been any discussion, maybe something to have is to move this forward. They're looking to move it forward.
Good. So you'll come back with information for the public here?
Yes, we'll have the public hearing and let you know about that if you're not...
Perfect, thank you. New business number two. Coy, you have the ship grant. What is it? We talked about this, was it two meetings ago?
Probably.
It was a grant for a bike repair station, where they're putting in fourteen hundred ninety-five dollars, and then the Parks Department is putting in six hundred and sixty-nine, and they're going to put the bike repair station on the bike path.
Yep, and Ron, yeah, and Ron has spoken with the other members of the joint venture group, and I think the agreement is that where the paths meet at Manorville would probably be the ideal location, or for the first one anyway, for the bike repair station at this point.
So...
I wasn't the most familiar with that, Mr. ...
You were, yeah, I was going to say, what is like a...
It's just a bike repair. Bike repair, it's just a little air pump, a little tool, wheel tuck. So you're riding your bike on the trail, and you get a flat tire, you pull up, or if your chain comes off, you pull... There's just a tool that'll be chained there. They got them all over Rochester.
Or if you park...
They've got them down at Harmony.
You park and you pull your bike off the car, and you have to put the front wheel back on, how it's front flat and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's just got your basic tools, and a chain, so then we can walk off a little bit. It's set and made for fixing them, kind of like. Coming more and more popular on bike trails.
So this isn't anything that employees are manning or anything? This is just something that's like the...
Nye County Public Health, the one for the ship stands for statewide health improvement partnership.
Right, right.
So it's a health initiative.
It's a free, it's kind of a freestanding, you know, how when you go on a fitness trail, there's all those freestanding, you know, activities that you can do. This is just a freestanding pole that has an air pump, that is a tool catcher from it.
I must have missed them.
And a...
Blue right by him, going too fast.
Such a fast...
You didn't blow a tire, Doug, you didn't blow it by him. Better hope you're right by the station when you blow your tire, or you're going to tear your bike while you're going to get there. So it's a health initiative from the state that comes down to the county.
Yeah.
So what is the city's proportion of the money? Three sixty-nine?
Three sixty-nine. But that includes in time, so we included administrative time and Ron's time and installation time, so.
About eighty dollars.
I think our actual dollar dollars are the one hundred and nineteen dollars, our dollar dollars.
The badge that was on there.
That's what that is.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll entertain a motion on the ship grant for the bike repair stations.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. One second.
Sorry.
Thanks, Coy. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Go same side. Clary's. I won ICSC update.
All right, so no mayor's report, I can get?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. So I did go to the International Conference of Shopping Centers, ICSC, something like that, at maybe here in Chicago a couple weeks ago, and then followed up with our consultant at Buckston, and started working with Rebecca today. So we're going to start building relationships with the retailers who match the needs for the city of Cassin, so I didn't necessarily approach Little Caesar's. Do we need more pizza? Well, that could be a good question, but we're trying to stay away from retailers that would be direct competition to our existing businesses. So those who match the needs of the city of Cassin will start building relationships with them. I was able to make connections with coffee, an ice cream restaurant, a sporting goods retailer, and gathered some specific market needs for pet food, fast food, and some discount retailers that we're following up with. Buckston will customize information for our future outreach to them. We had started with about twenty retailers that they had identified for matches with us. Now they'll help us reach out to the additional retailers we made contact with. They've also suggested creating an economic development newsletter as a follow-up tool, and Rebecca will take that on. Another conversation I had with the Buckston folks was the combination of the QuickTrip and the ShopCo Domino's. They're actually going to run a nationwide search and see what other retailers work within a half mile of that combination, to see if that would give us some possible leads for some additional retailers. QuickTrip recommending, is recommending fast food, haircut, personal and professional services, and some office type uses for near their new stores. They're identifying their new store is oriented towards over-the-road trucks and suggesting specific services like haircut hotels, which we do already have one. And Buckston has also suggested identifying which retailers are looking for the come-home side of the road versus the leave-home side of the street in relationship to some of the properties that we currently have available in Cassin. So I did reach out specifically to the ice cream restaurant today and left them a message asking them to help us identify properties that would be appropriate for them. That's my update.
Can you talk a little bit about the Buckston representatives coming to talk to the existing businesses?
Yes. Yes. So as part of our retail retention, we have a local store marketing app that actually can be used on a phone called LSMX. Buckston is coming to the next chamber meeting, which is actually November eighth.
Eleven, yeah.
Yeah, I said eleven, so I'm... November eighth at the American Legion, so I'll make sure to get that information back to Darren so he can get it out to everybody. But I did ask folks to think about if they could stay a little later at the next chamber meeting for that presentation.
Thank you.
You went a little quick there on your mayor's report, I was going to jump in. I went to Hilton Garden Inn for a transfer station funding update, and the state had some blooming figures that from two thousand fourteen to two thousand thirty-three, they've got a twelve million dollar, twelve billion dollar shortfall for their needs versus what they're going to have for revenue, and eighteen to thirty-seven, it's eighteen billion. And they did a lot of talking about different revenues, and counties were there also, and they were talking how their wheelage taxes and that, that's a group of money they can put right towards their road projects and that. And the legislators, well, the state people would like to see legislators work harder on putting funding aside, find your revenues, and mark them for something, make it legislation. So they had kind of the same thing to work with every year instead of waiting for a bonding bill, and they're real confused with the bonding. You spent so much with bonding this year, well, the next ten years or five years, you're paying the interest, you know? So you miss out on a lot of work. I just thought that some of them ideas could be used in smaller areas too, if you kind of set up a plan on what revenues are going to be used for what specific areas of need, and that's kind of the takeaway I got in it.
Okay.
That's interesting. A lot of the six hundred million in funding that they were using, District Six got a bunch, which is our district here, they're going to do unbounded concrete overlays on I thirty-five by Fairbolt and Albert Lee, and then they had, I believe, was a bunch of that guy wire going down the middle, and that was on thirty-five or something too. The big group isn't on fourteen this next year, but they're talking, they're still talking. They're real happy to see someone there from Cassin, I don't think of that.
Good, thanks for going. Just on transportation too, Doug, I had a chance to, got invited to the Tim Walz Round Table, and they had Manorville, and I attended that. Transportation was one of the big topics, along with health-related issues. But, you know, one of the issues too for the state of Minnesota is that we're a deficit state. Of all the gas tax money and transportation money that we send to the federal, we give about eighty-one cents back on the dollar. So our message to the feds was, you know, if Minnesota's going to pay our share of the taxes, we should get our share back for our federal projects like Highway fourteen and thirty-five million, so. Thanks, Doug.
You're welcome. Jay, engineers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first item here is South Manorville Avenue revised schedule for the special assessments. It's not on Dropbox, it's a schedule, I handed out to you with the W H K S logo on the top there. This is before you because we considered the schedule, and we completed a bunch of the work on the schedule here. We're looking at bringing it back to the council. Reason being is, we're looking at special assessments for the one property associated with South Manorville Avenue project, that's the property on the west side of the roadway. At the time, we were, a few council meetings ago, we kind of pulled back on proceeding with the special assessments. We thought we had maybe an agreement in principle with the property on the west side. Well, it's kind of fallen to the wayside, we haven't heard anything back, and we really got a response. So we're looking at for the council to maybe bring back the special assessments and continue down the special assessment process to maybe bring that property owner back to the discussion, or maybe even proceed with the special assessments themselves. So the project that was scheduled before you today is, if you'd like staff to renew this process and bring it back to the council, that'd be your next council meeting, we would look at having the resolution, they want to be assessed, and having that public hearing, which is the big final public hearing, that kind of the rubber meets the road when it comes to special assessments. So that's ultimately what we're looking for tonight, to verify the council that we want to begin this process again and start the special assessment discussion. And with that said, I do recommend that the council still negotiate with this property owner on coming up with an agreement so we can avoid the special assessments, so everybody can have a win-win here for the project, that's the end goal. But we may need to look at this process to restart the conversation again, so.
Okay. Well, I think we need to proceed with, you know, going. We sent the, kind of the agreement that we had to be signed, and it never got back, so this will prod everybody together, so. I think we got to get things set, get the rolling, get the notice out there.
Has anybody tried to physically call Carter?
I've contacted a couple times. I'm going to call him.
Physically call?
Yeah, I'm going to call.
Email, not by letter, the old-fashioned way?
Yeah, yeah. I'm the thoughtful. Like I did last night. I would say we can start getting the process, because we can always put the brakes on and stop anytime we want. Get the timeline out there.
So we don't really need any action, that's the direction from the council. We'll be back next council meeting with the resolution to, so they want to be assessed, and we'll look forward.
Okay. And number two?
All right, number two is an item we added, Sixteen Street Northeast. Bring it in for some direction from the council, nothing formal tonight. The discussion, you may, I don't need to remind the council that Sixteen Street going to the east, our urban kind of new upgraded road ends just east of the bridge there, and we got a mile and a half of gravel that's technically in the city limits, that's on our municipal state aid system. So the discussion tonight is, is the council interested in chasing after some MINDOT funds that may be available for that section of roadway? Ultimately, the project we feel from the staff was pretty important to the city, it's part of the regional transportation plan, it's in the capital improvement plan, it's been in the comp plan, it's going to be in the comp plan when you see the final draft of the comp plan and the comments that were received. There's a fair amount of negative comments from the community on the condition of that road, and it's definitely used a lot. Staff has been maintaining that gravel road, with the amount of traffic, that's very difficult. It's in the Highway fourteen corridor plan, et cetera. So we see it as a very attractive MINDOT due to all those reasons that I just mentioned, that it's important to the city of Cassin to get that road ultimately paved to the Dodge County Road fifteen there. So if the council's interested in providing us direction on proceeding with some preliminary engineering numbers and putting an application packet together to MINDOT, that's what we're looking for. If you authorize us tonight to do that, we will bring it back to the next council meeting, likely in the form of a resolution to actually make some applications here for the funding. What I kind of have penciled out right now in my head is, probably leave that as a rural section, so I'd have like a county road feel, I mean, it's a pretty wide road net right now, we're not at Kerber Gutter at this point, but get it paved a mile and a half out to County Road fifteen. We generally say a million a mile is the good rule of thumb on building a road, it's a mile and a half, so that's the number I have in my head right now. Obviously, I could put a little pen to paper and get more of an estimate together and see what we're up against. We have some constraints on the project with vertical curves and ditches and whatnot, we may have to regrade, so those are the things I'll be working on. And ultimately, putting that information into the MINDOT application packet, package. The other thing I'll be working with Nancy on, potentially matching funds, so there's a lot of grants available through MINDOT. They, of course, like to leverage their MINDOT dollars with city dollars, and you've probably heard about that, Doug, on how MINDOT likes to leverage their funds. So maybe MINDOT pays for half, and maybe city pays for half the project. Maybe we're not interested at this time on the city leveraging that amount of funds for that project, and we can go in with a hundred percent MINDOT application, those are some of the things I'll work out with Nancy. And the current funding package or MINDOT funds that I'm looking at would be a two thousand nineteen project, so probably not something that we do next year, but we have two thousand nineteen, so give us a little more time to... We've been spending a fair amount on infrastructure investment and roadways investment, but gave us a little bit more time to build up some of our reserves, and Nancy to do her finance management to see how it all works out. So what I have in my head right now, again, we're looking for some, from the direction of the council, if that's something you want to proceed with. Again, I see it from a staff level, that's a very important connection for the city to get that northeast road built out, and I think there's some good opportunity, and we got a strong application. But it is competitive. Doug, you mentioned that MINDOT's lacking in funds too, just like everybody else, but there's some money out there that we can proceed to try to secure.
I think it'd be in good interest of the city. You're going to have a lot of traffic that's going to be going around town, that's black town.
Don't you live right there?
I live on Black Town, pardon.
Yeah, but you go west instead of east now, Rochester.
I'd still go that way.
That is a future discussion, I think some of the businesses are a little concerned on getting that road going out of town and directing some of the traffic away from fifty-seven and potentially Main Street.
Well, that'll take some of the traffic away from the school, because not everybody's going to try to get at fifty-seven. They're going to go east.
Well, do you see, living out there, what type of traffic do you see? Like, you're all the...
Oh, it's...
Busy, busy?
It's, yeah, there's always, there's always cars going out there. I mean, it's not as busy as fifty-seven, but it's as busy as any city street. It's constant cars, on weekends and right near school time, right, schools out there still going that way.
Well, there's dirt to move on, isn't it?
Well, it's, it's in tough shape as a gravel road, they've put a lot of work in.
I imagine they rolled the black up and made the road out, but, you know.
That's what we're seeing on self Manorville Avenue, so definitely on the top, so buried. So we may look at maybe, maybe add a full regrade, maybe look at keeping some of the agit, surfacing that's there now, finding the bad spots this spring that are boiling up, digging those areas out, rocking them, but not doing a full regrade.
You might have.
You'll know where they're at pretty.
In that hill, there might be decent material.
So we got a lot of things to consider, again, it's more of a, is this the time to move forward? I, I think, again, we got a strong application, we just got to put a little time in here to get an application together, so.
What's your fees going to be? How much time are you going to have into this thing?
I think five thousand will probably get the application together, maybe ten thousand if we continue with MINDOT and some discussions, and so.
So if we make an application, we apply, and we say, we just want to apply for the whole one point five, and they come back and say, now we'll split it with you. There's no obligation on our part at the application, we can say, nope, that's not. Or once you apply, if they say it's fit, then you're committed to that, or?
I'd like to, I'd like to have some discussion with MINDOT, the state aid engineer, on, on feeling him out a little bit more on what a appropriate percentage would be. Not sure if we could negotiate, I'll, I'll come back with that answer though.
Okay, but we aren't committed.
I'd correct.
We're not committed until we sign the lines here, we accept that offer, we accept that.
I'd like to make a good faith effort and have a, have more discussion on that, but you're ultimately correct that you're not committed, so.
We should get our traffic counts on fifty-seven before we build a road out of town for our retailers that want to come to town for a certain number of traffic.
It just seems like we're cutting our hill. I understand that people want a road out there, I've heard numerous hundreds of comments on how that road needs to be paved, I get it, but at the same time, we're trying to recruit retail for Manorville Avenue, and we're creating a place so people don't have to drive by their new store, it doesn't, seems to be kind of counterproductive that way, but.
But it might help too on Manorville Avenue.
It might make other people come downtown that wouldn't come down because it was busier before, so I.
Yes, exactly.
I, I think the numbers are going to be high on Manorville Avenue regardless.
Yeah.
The other thing to consider too is if we, if you remember, we were allocated MINDOT funds for fifty-seven reconstruction in two thousand twenty-two. If we end up doing that project, we would close that section of roadway down, now the question is detour, and what detour do we have around town? I think Sixteenth Street would be a very attractive detour, so it's another reason why paving this out before two thousand twenty-two would make a lot of sense for the community.
You pave it nine ton?
Oh, I think it's got to be ten ton to meet, meet state aid requirements, so.
It's a lot of ton. So it won't break apart right away. Must be pretty good, this ten ton.
So if they're doing the redoing Manorville Avenue, don't they normally require a detour to be asphalt to asphalt?
And that, that amount of traffic, yes.
So that's something you can put in your application saying that this would help out with the detour?
Their project.
Their project?
Correct, yep.
Because otherwise, we're going to have to come down fifteen.
Or the dump road.
The dump road.
Or Manorville Avenue. Right by Jerry's house.
Only rule twenty-one. It would be, it would be that dump road or County fifteen, would it? I mean, obviously, people are going to detour their way anyway, they're going to figure out the shortest route for them, but the people that don't live around here are going to take it, and that'll be the two options.
So dump road, County Route nine, probably.
But nine won't. Then you'd have to take nine, doesn't go north, you'd have to go farther. You'd have to go almost to that center door. They won't.
County fifteen would be your best.
County fifteen, yeah, because they ain't going to detour the truck that far out.
I mean, we've got a lot of feedback, especially through this conference and plan process, with all the feedback we have, the data map that we had online.
Food map's going well.
Getting Sixteenth paved to the east or something, a lot of people have wanted, so.
I think we at least see what MINDOT will come back with.
I'm just looking at Brandon, it is, oh, sorry. Hey, we can.
Got to get into the application, what, the reason why I was a little wishy-washy there, Corey, is ultimately I got to see what application is the best and work out some things on my, my end and what level of efforts it's going to have to be, so.
Oh, can you come back in two weeks and tell us a little bit better idea if it's five or if it's ten?
Probably they have the application to the council in two weeks, there's the final approval, such, if we go for the fund, I think we're going to go for it, so.
It starts with a million and goes up. Any thoughts? It hurts. You want some?
Inaction on this, correct?
Yep, some direction looking forward, so. Do we need a motion for this? Probably should, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion regarding the Sixteenth Street Northeast pavement project.
I'll make a motion to put the engineer forum towards the application for Sixteenth Street Northeast.
Okay, motion to approve the engineering moving forward with that application, go up second.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed. I'm just going to abstain. Three to zero to one. You got yours one or eight? Yep, yep. Okay, motion passes. On to, that was it, right, Brandon?
Yep.
Okay. On to L Attorney's Report. We are going to close the meeting to discuss litigation strategy regarding special assessment challenges, and we'll reopen the meeting once we are done with that.